Excuse me.
Based on the list that was submitted for a total of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Eighty-seven, three, eight, three point four. Is from Colton, Maine. Totally eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Come on.
And ninety-two cents.
They just transcribed the numbers for pretty free.
Eighty-three, eight, ninety-two.
It's like point zero zero one. Interesting.
The third is the Jack Farley Company.
Jack Farley Company with eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and thirty cents. They have on a Worcester mask. Yeah, that's just so.
You get four. That's four. I need to get.
This one is from Ferguson Water Works. Eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents.
Technically no, it's a little responsible, but you can just walk out of the load that you have.
This is for the, from the John Holmes Holy and Sons. Giving up eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. Hey Chuck. And this one is from, uh, Pudding White. In the amount of, see, two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so one more bid.
Yeah.
What happened with this one, I got it today from the post office. It was delivered to them on Saturday. They said they tried to deliver it yesterday, but they never come, you know, lots down to the office. So it went back to.
It, it stamped at the post office on the date prior to what it.
They wrote on it. They got it. Um, I had a call.
It was that snow, that, that snow on Friday night. This is from, I don't think, from Noble. Ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-six cents. I guess it didn't really matter if the post office got it there in time. Noble, Noble Mission Possible out of Rockland. Out of Newcomen.
It was the eighty-one.
Jack Farley was eighty-one.
Yeah, so I. So Jeff, before we do the final thing, we have to review to make sure that they meet all of the the did spec on, and they didn't miss anything that was, that are requiring, so it would be.
Did we give them the quantities or they did their own, they did their own take offs on, on the grounds? Give them quantities? If we gave them the, if we gave them the quantities, then we'll show you. That's the biggest thing, is the quantities.
Thousand and one. So you want to review that while Chuck's updated that day?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll, we'll go back to that, and we'll chuck up all my stuff. This is the second one I have, Jeff. We won't hold you up too long.
No, that's fine, I can follow you if you want.
Yeah.
We'll just start.
Yeah. What was yours there, Jeff?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I appreciate you inviting me to talk. I created the same agenda as the last time, and I'm thinking to myself now, I probably should have taken a couple of those projects off. Because they're, they're pretty much done. The hydraulic model is completed, the only thing that we, we actually have just discussed or described, the, the calibration of the, or the construction calibration of the model, but I haven't reviewed yet, so that's why it's partially completed. The Cedar Street, well number one, land purchase and site screening memo, I gave that to you the last time, and that's completely, we're all set with that. And we appended that to the, to the next project, which is the drinking water supply. Protection grant application, which the task that we completed over the last month was Jeff and I met with the woman from NASA EP out of the site. And she thought it was promising for it, and they still have to go through the process. I think we might remember that Jeff and I both said that the most of the grant, or the applications that are submitted for grants are approved. And I think that there was only about six that were done this year, so.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty promising to get that. So as soon as we do hear about that, we'll let you know, and I guess you can probably get into the negotiations with the property, move for the DS property again, and look at purchasing that land. Obviously, they're looking to sell because they can't do anything current, so. And working, obviously, doing the groundwater exploration program, which hopefully will be approved tonight for the second time. We can move forward with that, and we'll start drilling wells on both the Cedar Street one parcel, and then DS parcel, and then we'll look to replace the Cedar Street well number one with a new one, and then install a new well field on the DS property, so. The next project is the water system master plan, moving forward with that. As a part of that, it's kind of an extension, a little bit out of scope, but the Strawberry Fields project that we reevaluated. Jeff and I attended the Zone of Water Fields meeting this past month after we met with you guys, and it, it looks like, we didn't have the information at that particular time. You can serve them the water, but I will talk a little bit about the availability of water in your straw water supplies and the amount of finished water that you can.
Did they have a new plan at the last meeting you were at?
They revised the plan.
Okay. Yeah, it's a totally different plan with condos and.
Yes.
Cut to that one?
Yeah, that's a hundred.
Yes. So we have that plan?
Yeah, we have that plan now, and we looked at it, and we added a model onto it, and put a name in there, and we'll produce a, a lever to use specifically for that.
Cause they're reading tonight.
Oh, do they? I think we had mentioned that we would try to have something done by DM this month, so they didn't seem like it was.
Yeah, I think they're really wanting to continue the area.
Yeah.
That's what I was calling back.
So I don't, I don't have, from a hydraulic standpoint, a fire protection standpoint, you can serve the subdivision. The only concern that we're looking at right now is, we're looking at your maximum day demands in the system, and they exceed the, the amount of available well water supply that you have now. We're looking at the, the, obviously, similar to Cedar Street well number one, where your capacity is down to fifty gallons a minute, but you permit it for about two hundred, eight hundred and ninety-two, or something like that. Gallons per minute, and that's why we're going to recommend that that be replaced, but I think that that's a maximum day demand, what basically is happening is, is if you have your maximum day demand going on, you're not pumping that, which is really what we should be doing. What you're doing is you're taking some out of storage in order to supplement your maximum day demand. So you can satisfy the demands, it's just not optimal, the situation, because when you want to design a system, you want to make sure that you pump the maximum day. And that's not occurring, it wasn't occurring before, but that's, that's other gene. And, you know, obviously, Jeff had expressed concerns, and I have one as well, that there are other developments that are partially developed that are moving forward. It's just a question of, I think one of the developers had some bankrupt issues, and he's going to sell the project, and team is going to get us some subdivision plans for the outlets, or even. Not urgent, but it is something that we should move forward with, and what we're going to do, basically, and I can talk more about it next meeting, is when we get closer on the recommendations for the water system master plan, what we're going to concentrate on initially is the source water, whether it be long and finished, and that's, you know, that's kind of how you do water system master plans, to get the source out, making sure that you have that, so. But the, the board's already taking steps to move forward with, obviously, that DS property, it's a, it's a good site for, for a new well field, the only issues are, is it's going to take a little while, so what I would recommend is you, you know, what I'll probably do is I'll work with Jeff on pulling together a proposal for that Cedar Street well number one, because when you replace a well, and if it's within fifty to two hundred and fifty feet of, of the existing source, you can do it without permitting it as a new source, it's just the existing source, so. That process can be reviewed and approved in a year's time, and then you can continue forward with construction, or even less than that, so. That's what we recommend with that. The other thing I would recommend, and I know that the board has considered, or at least discussed it, is looking at that Brooks Street well, which is a, a, a approved supply for Somerset, but they're not using it. Apparently, the, when they pump into their system, their surface water causes a lot of trouble problems, so. I know Jeff has been proactive, and has spoken with people at Somerset, but also with the local representative. I forget who that was, Jeff, but.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, I mean, the Saco, the representative you talked to about at Somerset, on Brook Street?
The cat?
I don't know.
That. So I would continue on that line, I mean, it's, it's a good supply, I don't know what, you know, we can evaluate the water quality and see if there will be any issues, but it's a treated water supply, so you can pump right into your finished water system, there's no issues about water quality, you can get that. But if you, that would be carbon footprint, assuming you can negotiate for that, so we would recommend that. I'm thinking that the water system master plan will probably finalize the draft report by mid-April. And Jeff, if you need my support to, to go to the planning zone, we'll do a separate letter for the Strawberry Field subdivision, and provide some information on that. That probably, to them, won't include anything about the source water issue, but just basically recommend, you know, give them the hydraulic conditions, and let them know that their subdivision can be supplied by the water system. It's a, it's a forty B project anyway, so I don't think it really matters whether they, they connect or hook up anyway, at least that's what I understand. Though, what I know about that process, because it's a forty B, they should, shouldn't have a problem with that, but, but you know, we can tell them that they have fire protection and act for pressures for water as well. So I guess my recommendation tonight would be for, to approve the Tashwater, two thousand and twenty dash O one for the groundwater exploration program, which we presented, and it was approved last time, but I think that it was a district meeting.
Yeah, that'll be your only act of, that'll be the order on.
Okay.
For the final reporting, so.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
So after that, we can sign that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we voted to approve it, right? Yeah, so we can sign it that, right after the meeting, exactly, this one.
Okay, that's fine, no problem, and I can, I can hang out in case somebody comes and has any questions.
Now it's scheduled to start at six, right?
Okay. I think that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, we will have to answer any questions as well.
No. When you were talking about, at times, we might have to draw from the tags as well as producing a plan. Is that, that's probably going to mean that we're going to have to run longer than sixteen hours a day, correct?
It could, but that's only during, that's a good question, but it's only during the maximum day demand, so it would be very infrequent. I mean, your maximum day demands, at least what they have happened in the past, you might exceed that a couple of times during the summer, but. Would it probably, they'd probably run in under sixteen hours during the summer.
Yeah, I have a schedule in terms of the year twenty-one this summer. So we might have to run over four hours a day if these other developments in this groundwater, just a little bit, there's no chance of that. So it's going to.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, obviously, when you run in excess of your maximum day, like if each, you know, company, you know, twenty hours or twenty-four hours on some days, you're pumping your peak hour in like two, which is anything like that.
Well, what happens on those days when we get into drought times, and we don't have the ability to pump the wells, and we hit, because those are the peak times.
Yeah.
And the well, and, and the wells get low, and we, we just don't have, that's the big, I mean, that's, that's the biggest fear.
Yeah.
Is, is what happens, okay, yes, we'll do a, a water bank for, or do a sprinkling, whatever, but that sometimes doesn't matter. That, you know, we're typically add more, whether it be development type, or that more, I think, whatever, Stone Gate or whatever, adding additional homes, and then adding a development like that, and we're already at that max capacity on some days as it is, couldn't we dry our system on?
Well, I, depending upon, you know, if you have a secondary drought, that could absolutely happen, I mean, I don't know if you approached that at all in the past.
I don't.
I don't think so, I think that's, I don't know if the, the developments that we've learned of recently, they're partially built, I think that they were already approved, but. You know, so I don't know if there's much to do about that.
And it's all.
I think that moving forward, anything that, and, and Jeff and I talked about with the planning zoning and coordination with planning and building inspector in town, if they get any subdivision that come in, they should be reviewed here first.
Oh, it's supposed to.
And so that, that would be my recommendation, it's kind of with the, the developments that we're looking at now, it's kind of, they're already approved, so nothing should do about it, but you point to good, I mean, obviously, you don't want to stretch your system.
Yeah, and I think we need to note that to this only point back, that yes, there, there is supply, but, I, I think we should have the button that says, on some days, we will be over our maximum capacity based on what has already been approved.
Right.
And, you know, just so it's, you know, people realize that, that, oh, all of a sudden, all these things get built up, and then we, two summers from now, we run into, we have to shut the water system down. What do you tell people then?
Yeah, I think, you know, this discussion, and these questions are really good, now, I may, I'm going to rescind my last remark, I think I am going to talk about it a little bit. Look at it, our water supply and treatment capacity, and that, like, excuse me. And, and, and we can, we can, I can include in that letter, you know, language that states that any future developments have to come here first.
We also have a backup for time, but we don't know, I don't know, we don't know the size and how much production, if, if we lost all the wells, or we lost the plant, let's just say that we lost the plant tomorrow.
Well, see, that, that, we actually, I'm glad you. I'm glad you asked that question, because it was a question I was going to ask Jeff. Not really happening, but subsequent to or after the. One of the things we do have to look at in this gap, is our failure to treat the plant in the water system master plan, so one of the things that we don't have is information on that ton, interconnection, as far as the pumping capacity at those. So we're going to have to get that, and that's something that we will evaluate.
That's right, we do have another potential Somerset, we're working on that at work. We're working on something on Somerset, something that tells us.
They said there's only six in the mail.
Yeah, we'll, more to the planning and negotiations on the Somerset well on Brook Street, it would be helpful, obviously, if we could get that online, pump it down in the system, because it provides an additional backup supply, I don't know what capacity that is, if it's in the business unit. You know, we'll have to model it, see if we can get into the system to supply, you know, with that, potentially in the ton connection that you can get from Somerset in your system. You know, we can evaluate that with the model now, because the model's totally calibrated, so if we get hydraulic conditions from surrounding systems, and the pump information that the ton and connection that would be able to determine, you know, system, so, these are great questions, and they, they all have the document in the water system master plan. And then when we write about the plan, planning zone, we'll, they will leave that line for Jim about the concerns about the water and treated water supplies.
Would you be able to tell, or could you put something in the report saying, you know, that you can handle two hundred and pounds until it's like critical, critical level, would you be able to determine that?
I, I would probably hesitate to do that, only because I don't know, I mean, you brought the question that about the potential drought, or, you know, being able to supply the system, I, I wouldn't want to put that, right? What I would probably say was, that right now, your, your demands, your maximum day demands exceed your livable supply, so that's kind of a critical situation. You're going to have to look at improving your supply, whether you're optimizing the plant, if that's possible. Or definitely, you know, either redeveloping new wells, or re-courting your existing wells, or improve wells, of all, so. All great questions, and they're all going to be documented in the water system master plan, and specifically for that, probably get study will include.
We haven't gone to the fire flow yet, have we? They're supposed to do all, they don't even know. Yeah, I want to do it after the flush.
You did, you did some, you didn't do any on this leg.
Yeah, we didn't do any on this leg, but then, we had done some, we did mostly over there, we did three more, you know, we've done one right there.
So we have to, wait, because this, you know. We have to calibrate the model, and, and it calibrated very quickly, or it almost, you know, simulations of the water, very close to a field, and even, as I had mentioned, Jeff, he had asked for some fire flow information somewhere. The, the tests that we did at the time, it was that close out, so it's not providing realistic flows, but now with the model, with it being calibrated, we could run a fire flow already, and tell you what we can get for fire for twenty psi, which is the requirements for ISO, so any place in the system, we could run fire at that particular condition, and we can get for the flows.
I'll say to you. Jeff, have you? No. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
I most appreciate it. So as far as the bid goes, you know, I feel comfortable avoiding, I would suggest to you not to, you know, because. I can't, I don't need to sit down and really go over this. Okay, so one of the bids has twenty-three items on, and this bid has twenty-two. I just can't, I have to. So I would make a recommendation, we refer the bids to the superintendent, if we need to.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
What's that time for you, if you have to have?
I'll get it done tomorrow.
I have to really, I don't do this. Well, I have a need to avoid it, but we, did we set the funding aside already, or is that on the line?
Seven thousand already, there's an additional.
All right, so, but we do have an additional on, on the warrant for tonight, so we will, we'll put over, put twenty something.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, that's what I need to really have a. All right, so, see, if there's a, if there is a time crunch, we can call, we'll call the, the post meeting. I'm definitely, yeah, I think if we make seven o'clock, of course. My schedule won't come that trouble week, so I don't know. All right. You have one or two, bro.
We have to.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
I didn't know if we had the award based off of the opening tonight, I don't know.
No, no, we can refer to the superintendent.
There could be something possibly missing in one of those.
Okay, yeah, so I asked for motion to refer the bids to the superintendent, the decision evaluation and recommendations.
I disagree.
I'm discussing, hearing that, I'll just tell all those involved there, guys, sorry, we're bringing you in, yes, it's tonight, but. Do you want to, do you want to make sure you're right?
Take that, I'll see you Thursday. It's actually. We put it in the.
We'll look at the recommended improvements in that, but, in fact, I don't know if we'll follow that.
And maybe you can review evaluation, you can reach out to the most, to make sure he's responsible, and say, and say, if he, tell him he's missing this, what is the cost of his bid? If included, and then you'll pin that in your report, that, that's what we just know, that's, if they are missing a hundred, it's a hundred good, it's a hundred as well.
Yes.
I would, I would question that with, with council, that you have the ability, because it came in as a lowest bid, if you find something, you can, they can make.
It's going to be most responsible, but.
But in your language, you can have a discussion with them, and if they say, yes, that, that was just a, a missed item, and it doesn't change his bid, then, but if it changes, obviously, we change it, I'm assuming we'll change it, but you got to get, because they were the lowest bid, in the evaluation process, you have, you have to hear that. Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, all right, so you'll evaluate, and we'll call you to award, or can we wait till the next meeting to award it, or?
I don't get this, guys.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, you see that? All right.
I just got to figure out what I do this.
Okay. Next is approval. Is there a motion to approve minutes of February eleventh monthly, and February eleventh, second session.
Second.
Is there a motion to accept the list of March second, which was the special meeting deciding the warrant? Correspondence, do you have any correspondence, any, no? Financial conditions. We are willing to approve the warrants, and here as submitted by the district department, so.
Seven.
Financial conditions. We are on income, we are at seventy-four point three percent, and expenses at sixty-five point seven percent, we are about seventy-five percent. Yeah, seventy-four, we're about, so we're about seventy-seven, we have completed, we have a hundred and eight thousand, our one week, four oh one seventy-one in the super bills, ten thousand, one seventy-five eighty-one committed, and total, super one, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six ninety-eight forty-five. The motion to accept is ninety-eight point four, so. Sorry. So, sorry. So we're telling him what, that...
I mean, I'm sure. We're okay, yeah. So we're replacing media, and we're going to project, and it's a project, so we're sure. Right now, we're running out of two quarters. Everything's going pretty well. It's crazy, but it's, yeah. It's all, it's all, um, we've got our, we've got our... We've got our mag meters calibrated last week. That one's very long. Very appreciated. I made very fast week. We got it, it came in, it came in today. Again, we have a little hiccup, and fixed it. It took me a while away, but I should be back next week. We should be up north before the bathroom with our pumps. Just trying to see if we'll be fresh next month. Hosting that very soon. We have that law, we have a sign.
When was the last time we did a full form? It's got to be a year and a half, yeah, got to be, got to be. So we're trying something new. I expect to see a lot of crap coming out of that, you know. Besides that, I...
Well, I've seen those go over time last year. I signed a payroll this week, first time we went out.
Is that why you miss so happy?
Yeah, that's why I'm so busy, and we can't, we have nothing to do with it. Nothing, nothing else.
Was it my... Oh, that was the one I signed, the one I signed. The one on game.
Oh, yeah.
I see, I saw those phones, those phones, right? So barrel, maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I had two more passes. Olden, first of all, the Yankee, that's the project update?
Yeah, there's, going at, like, eight boxes, we initially tested them last week, and we're looking dead this week. It's a little challenging over there, because of the new laws that were signed in Mass Legislature, where the EST bay doesn't require a system, not a pipe on, but there's a lot of, there's a giant battle on, and we're kind of sucking it up. And it's, it's, so the fire, the fire people are putting a hydrant in. The EST bay has put a water main in, and there's just a lot of...
So for the water guys, the sprinter guys putting the hydrants in? Really? It's, they don't do the old five foot outside the building anymore, or what? No.
It's bananas. So one doesn't want to do a pressure test for the other, they don't want, it's going to get settled Thursday, I mean, I'm doing one pressure test, right? Figured out, right?
Have, do, are all the neighbors aware that they're getting the new services? Have we notified them, or they notified them?
They're getting new services too. We should probably, I don't know, some lawyers, one of these is going to be down. So, I'm going to have them here on Thursday, we'll talk about it. Yes, they're getting new services too, in Kerr Box, and they want to redo it. I suppose the way I'm talking about it. Yeah. But I also think at the same time, if we have any meters that need to be replaced, we should send to notify whether they're getting a new service, we should probably be, at the same time, whether that...
Mandatory.
Yeah, mandatory, whether they've chosen to redo their line to the house or not, we should change the meter at the same time. That would not have to, you know, some kind of, yeah. That's it. And then the last is a meter installation update, anything changed from last one?
Anyway.
So we have to do 38 since the last one?
Nice.
With all five of us, seven as well.
So we've done 121?
Yes.
There's 537 left. That's good. We're almost at 700, so?
That's good. Not just yet. Well, once we get this done, we're going to go on the next one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Yes, we're going to be, well, it's Saturday, we're going to tonight, so we have...
Yeah, okay, that's good.
I'll be calling you on Thursday. That's a problem. My mother's all stuck, New Hall's in the driveway? They're moving everything out Wednesday, Thursday. So I'll be calling. No one will ever jump out of the...
Two minutes, definitely, in the business, yeah? Is it here? You guys?
No.
Announcements, next regular meeting of the commission will be... April 14th, it is? Five, six? All right, April 14th, okay. April 14th, that, five. Four, three? Four, three? Four, three? How about Ken, boy? Anybody? Is there a motion to adjourn?